Okay, good afternoon. We're about ready to start. Please note that Senators Harry Santos and Senator King Neighbors will be joining us via virtual platform. Also, we are live on both Facebook and right now on channel 23 on cable TV. So before I call this session to order, I would like to recognize the presence in the gallery, Representative Levas Stacker from the House, Chair H. E. W., Congress. So with that, this is the sixth day, second regular session. Today is Wednesday, December 15, 2021, approximately 1:35 PM in the afternoon here in the Senate Chamber. At this time, the Chair requests everyone to please rise for the moment of silence. Moving on, at this time, I recognize the floor. Please call the vote.
Senator Cruz?
Yeah.
Senator De Jonguero?
Here.
Senator Hokel?
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Ready.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yeah.
Senator Malonia?
Yeah.
Senator Kilua? Senator Soblon?
Yeah.
Senator Santos?
Here.
Mr. President, all nine members are present.
With nine members present, we have called to conduct this session. Again, I let the record reflect that Senators Santos and Neighbors are appearing before us virtually, joining us in session via Google Meet. Moving on to item B, Republic Comment. This time, this is a portion of our session where we allow members from the public to present testimony on items on the order business for today's meeting. And please, and please just state your name for the record. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Thank you, Senate President, and thank you all members for allowing me to have public comments today. I'm still nervous even though I'm just in the same house as you all. Thank you. I am here to give public comments on the House Communications 2265 that has been transmitted for your action, which is on the House Bill 2255, House Substitute 1, to establish a separate license on for online sales of alcoholic beverages. I am the author of this bill, and I am here to advocate with you to see its safe passage in the nearest future, partly because this is a really important bill to allow for our businesses that have been trying to expand into different opportunities, and one of those is online liquor sales. And I know that could be something like, what do you mean by that? But there are people who have gift baskets that want to include a bottle of wine, for example, but they are not able to because they couldn't buy a liquor license or get applied for a liquor license at ABTC. I worked with the Director of ABTC, Mr. David Maritza, to find the correct language and all the elements to make sure that this would be something that would support business owners who want to expand these types of options. We are living in a digital world now. I recently read an article about a police union that was selling liquor bottles that were engraved online as one way to make fundraising, which they didn't get licenses for, so they got in trouble. But it is a way to lucratively expand business options for small business owners, and especially being in a small place like this, it allows our business owners more opportunities. And so with that, I ask for your support in passing this bill through your committees and onto your floor because it will help our small businesses and open up more avenues for revenue. Thank you.
Mrs. Massey, Representative Stacker? Do you have further comments to present this morning or this afternoon? At this time, the Chair recognizes the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President, and because we were furnished with some communications that were obtained before the posting of the agenda, I'd like to offer the proper suspensions so that these communications can be a part of today's agenda. So at this time, I'd like to offer a motion to suspend Rule 3, Section 3 of the Official Rules of the Senate and in compliance with the Open Government Act, amendment to today's agenda, to accept any communications that may have been posted after the call in accordance with the OGA. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Floor Leader, as indicated by the floor leader, a motion to suspend rules. And seconded under discussion. Under discussion, I recommend the floor leader.
Just for further clarification, the suspension so that we can accept the Governor's Message Number 22-137 all the way to 22-140. I just wanted to reference these communications for the suspension. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, floor leader, for that clarification. With that, I would like to please call the vote to suspend. For the suspension of...
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator De Jonguero?
Yes.
Senator Hokel?
Yeah.
Senator King Neighbors?
Yes.
Senator Malonia?
Yes.
Senator Kilua?
Yeah.
Senator Soblon?
Okay.
Senator Santos?
Yes.
Mr. President?
I'm good.
Mr. President, all nine members present voted yes.
With nine members present voting affirmative, the suspension of rules to bypass. With that, under item C, reading and approval of the general, floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under item C, we have two journals, and the first journal is Senate Journal Number 22-15, for today's second regular session dated October 15, 2021. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
The motion offered by the floor leader to adopt Senate Journal Number 22-15, we'll hear a second to that motion. Seconded in discussion. All those in favor of the motion for the adoption of Senate Journal Number 22-15, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Senate Journal Number 22-15 is adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our second and final journal for adoption today is Senate Journal Number 22-16, fifth day, second regular session, dated October 22, 2021. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Motion offered by the floor leader for the approval or the adoption of Senate Journal Number 22-16, we'll hear a second to that motion. And seconded in discussion. All those in favor of the motion to adopt Senate Journal Number 22-16, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Senate Journal Number 22-16 is adopted. Moving on to item B, messages from the Governor. Chair?
Mr. President, we have Governor's Message Number 22-127 to 22-140.
Any comments? Any comments from the members? The members' communications? Is there none? Moving on.
Mr. President?
Senator Santos, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this is relative to Governor's Message Number 22-135, the nomination of Mr. Oscar P. Kilua. I would like to award the administration the appointment of Mr. Oscar Kilua to serve as a member of the Public Activities Commission representing the First Senator of the District. As Santos knows, Mr. Kilua has previously served on this board and holds a master's degree. That despite the challenges of air transportation for interadded travel, I trust that our good Chairman and the Committee of EATI can facilitate Mr. Kilua's public hearing remotely as it allows for by our Senate rules. Mr. Kilua's appointment, if I'm not mistaken, requires also the confirmation of the House, and I ask that our House come to court, facilitate Mr. Kilua's hearing if any, and confirmation. That the confirmation of Mr. Kilua together with Mr. Borja will provide the necessary corals for the PUC Board to conduct business. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Massey, Senator Santos? Moving on, moving to item number, item E, communications from judiciary.
Mr. President, we have one judiciary communication, Number 22-05.
Comments? Communications from heads of the executive department?
Mr. President, we have two department message, Number 22-29 to 22-30.
Comments from the members? Recognize Senator Edith De Jonguero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief comment on Department Message Number 22-29. If we could request for, if it does exist for the CNMI's infrastructure master plan, I think that would be a great opportunity for us to take a look at exactly what kind of infrastructure plans are we addressing and, and you know, for the sustainability and future growth of the Commonwealth. That is very important. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mrs. Massey, Senator De Jonguero? And if I may, I believe there is a product that recently was adopted, not necessarily referencing your agency in discussion, but the OPD, they had came up, so I'm certain that if there's none from this entity, then there's that footprint that was, I mean, blueprint that was recently adopted for our review. I believe all the members have been given ample time to review the legislation. Thank you. Moving on, on item, under item G, communications from the House. At this time, the Chair recognizes Vice President Gustavo Quintero.
Mrs. Massey, Mr. President. Mr. President, is there no texts from the members? House Communication Number 3, which is 22-64, and Number 4, Communication 22-65, and Number 5, Communication 22-66. With a proper motion being made by the floor leader, I recommend that the accompanying bills under these communications and resolution be placed on today's calendar for action. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Kilua. And at this time, I recognize the floor leader for the appropriate motion as indicated under discussion with Senator Gustavo Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President, and after the request of our Vice President, Senator Gustavo Quintero, I'd like to now offer a motion to suspend Rule 7, Section 10, to place House Bill Number 22-53, HS1, House Bill Number 22-55, HS1, and House Joint Resolution Number 22-11, HS1, on today's bill calendar and resolution calendar respectively. So moved.
Motion been offered by the floor leader for the placement of the three House Communications, most notably 3, 4, 5, on today's order business, on today's bill calendar, and has been seconded. Discussion?
Ready.
Ready? All those in favor of the motion for the placement of those communications on today's bill calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Placement of those communications hereby approved. Under item H, communications from the Senate. Chair?
Mr. President, we have nine Senate Communication Number 22-77 to 22-85.
Any comments from the members? May none? Item I, communications from Washington Delegate?
Mr. President, we have one Washington Delegate, Number 22-03.
Comments? Under item J, unfinished business?
None.
Under item K, prefiled bills, initiatives, local bills, and resolutions. At this time, I would like to allow an opportunity for the sponsor or the author of various bills to probably read out their legislation. So at this time, I will begin with Senate View Number 2269 and recognize Senator Edith De Jonguero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have prefiled Senate View Number 22-69 to amend to CMC subsection 7221 to increase the age of the zoning board members, increase the number of government employees on the board, and to include private sector employees. Additionally, I did prefile Senate View Number 22-70 to waive the repayment requirements of the CNMI Scholarship Memorandum of Agreement Promised or Remotely. I also prefiled Senate Local Bill Number 22-11 to waive the repayment requirements of the Saipan Higher Education Financial Assistance Memorandum of Agreement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator De Jonguero. At this time, the Chair recognizes the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to formally introduce Senate Commemorative Resolution Number 22-01, commending the life and selfless contributions of the late Glisario Eli del Mundo Arago, honorary consul of the Philippines for the Commonwealth of the Northern Rana Islands, and to pay tribute for his many years of dedication and exceptional acts of distinguished service. My, this introduction of this commemorative resolution, Mr. President, was done so that I could present the resolution at the memorial for the late Glisario Arago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Soblon.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go ahead.
Yes, so the next is for me to formally introduce Senate Joint Resolution 22-02, again, commending the life and selfless contributions of the late Glisario Eli del Mundo Arago, honorary consul of the Philippines for the Commonwealth of the Northern Rana Islands, and to pay tribute for his many years of dedication and exceptional acts of distinguished service. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Soblon. Under the same item, I would like to just go ahead and formally introduce Senate Resolution Number 22-12, just to recognize and commend Julia Lorraine El Santos for her unyielding commitment to serve as a passionate entrepreneur and a proud advocate for the deaf community in the Commonwealth of the Northern Rana Islands. Also, Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-3, to recognize and commend Gordon Ichiar Arciano for his significant contributions in years of selfless dedication to preserve, promote, and protect the indigenous cultures of the Commonwealth of the Northern Rana Islands. And Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-04, expressing support to implement the participation of the Commonwealth of the Northern Rana Islands in small community air service programs offered by the United States for transportation. The Senate Joint Resolution Number... At this time, correct it, and I will go ahead and, if there's... I'll go ahead and read out the Senate View, item number eight, Senate View Number 22-71, and that is to create a CNMI term pension plan and for other purposes. Thank you. Under, moving on to item L, introduction of bills, initiative, local bills, and resolutions. For the Senate, Mr. President? Recognize the chair, Mr. Hokel?
Chair, I will introduce Senate Joint Resolution 22-5.
It's coming up on this.
Oh.
I, I do have one, I chair have one, and it's Senate Joint Resolution Number 22, under item L, 22-05, and that is approving the Governor's request to create a new program and business unit for retiree bonuses and reprogram $1.3 million from the General Fund for the payment of the retirees' $500 bonuses. And I wish to ask the members that this would be sponsored under Committee of the Whole. No objection from the members? And at this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, in reference to Rule 9, Section 10A, hereby offer motion to place to place Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-05 on today's resolution calendar for this body's action. So moved, Mr. President.
Yep. There's been a motion offered by the floor leader for the placement of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-05 on today's resolution calendar. And we seconded. Discussion?
Right.
Just for the placement. Discussion? Ready? All those in favor for the placement of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-05, please say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
The placement of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-05 hereby approved. Reports of Standing Committee, item M? Chair?
None.
Reports of Special Conference Committee?
None.
Resolution calendar. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first resolution on today's resolution calendar is Senate Resolution Number 22-12, a Senate Resolution to recognize and commend Julia Lorraine El Santos for her unyielding commitment to serve as a passionate entrepreneur and a proud advocate for the deaf community in the Commonwealth of Northern Rana Islands. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
There's been a motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Senate Resolution Number 22-12. We'll hear a second to that motion.
Seconded.
Seconded in discussion. Under, because since I, uh, sponsored this, uh, resolution, I, uh, and before I, I say my statement, I welcome all the other members to join me in sponsoring this, uh, important resolution and this gentle lady is, um, is being recognized for her, her, not only her advocacy, but her, um, the never say, um, the, the no, how do you say it? The, the nothing is impossible, uh, that anything is possible when, when you're, when you're determined to, to do something. And being that she is a, some sort of disability, she was able to open up her, her shop on Tinian, uh, the Easy Sweet Fix Ice Cream Shop, and with the, with the, uh, with the heavy support not only from the parents in the community, but also from the community, the, uh, uh, OVR, Office of Educational and Meditation. There's several, uh, um, support system that are during the agency then and, and today. And then I think, uh, I feel that it is necessary that, um, uh, individuals such as Julia herself needs to be commended for her, her, um, her, her efforts and her determination to make sure that, I mean, to ensure that when she followed through with her dream, she was able to, uh, to fulfill this. So, uh, I just thought that it's important for us to, uh, to rec, to recognize her in that regard and, uh, and if I'm not mistaken, uh, December also is a, a, uh, the official or the, the month of where she's going to officially open the facility. So if you guys don't continue, please visit, uh, Sweet Fix. Alright, with that, this. All those in favor of the motion to adopt Senate Resolution Number Twenty-two dash twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Senate Resolution Number Twenty-two twelve hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no objection. We have a blanket motion for number two and three, the Senate Commemorative Resolution Twenty-two zero-one and Senate Joint Resolution Twenty-two dash two, as both have the same, um, language on their title. So there's no objection. Uh, I'd like to, um, our second and third resolution for adoption is Senate Commemorative Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-one and Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-two, commending the life and selfless contributions of the late Glisario Eli del Mundo Arago, honorary consul of the Philippines for the Commonwealth of the Northern Marana Islands, and to pay tribute for his many years of dedication and exceptional acts of distinguished service. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of both Senate Commemorative Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-one concurrently, uh, Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-two. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Yep.
Seconded, in discussion? What would you like to, any other discussion?
Um, yes, under discussion, Mr. President, um, it was an honor to, um, to present the Senate Commemorative Resolution on behalf of the Senate to, um, the family, um, of the late, um, Glisario Eli del Mundo Arago, um, in addition to his family, at the memorial, um, where, uh, the Philippine community and, as well as a lot of the business community and the corporations and, um, civic groups and movements that he was a part of. So, um, I was happy to be there to, um, extend this, this resolution or this commemorative resolution, um, on our behalf. And yeah, in reference to the Senate Joint Resolution, um, as soon as it goes through the legislative process, we will call his family and, uh, his staff of the council and, uh, any other members that would like to be here for the official presentation of the Senate Joint Resolution. Um, and with that, I'd just like to, um, thank, uh, his family and, uh, thank, thank the, um, our honorary consul, Eli Arago, for his, um, service to our islands when he was, uh, here in the Commonwealth of the Northern Maranas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. President.
Mrs. Massey, floor leader. I recognize, uh, Senator Santos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And so the late honorary consul, Eli, has, was a remarkable individual who has phenomenal achievements throughout his life and has done tremendous good for the many years that he has recited in the Commonwealth, whom you may consider his second role. From the several news articles and social media postings that I read, that I read, the late honorary consul was a man of stature, full of compassion, affection, respect. He has not only touched the lives of our indigenous community, but also the private governmental sectors, our forgotten churches, and the entire Commonwealth. And so on behalf of the people of Rota, I'd like to extend our profound and heartfelt condolences to his family and loved ones for his untimely passing and gratitude for his extraordinary years of unconditional service, commitment, and deepness to our Commonwealth. May the late honorary consul and the best in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Massey, Senator Santos. No further discussion. I'd like to, uh, call for the adoption of the two resolutions. All those in favor of the adoption of Senate Commemorative Resolution Twenty-two one and Senate Joint Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
Adoptions are hereby adopted. I mean, the resolutions are hereby adopted. Moving on to, uh, item four, the resolution calendar. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next item is Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-three, a Senate Joint Resolution to recognize and commend Gordon Ichiar Marchiano for his significant contributions and years of selfless dedication to preserve, promote, and protect the indigenous cultures of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marana Islands. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
There's been a motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-three. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Yep.
Seconded, in discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, if I may, on to your discussion.
Senator Santos, recognize.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And some people are just born with a passion or special gift of notoriety or posterity piece or our culture. Mr. Marchiano has exceptionally demonstrated that and therefore deserves to be commended and honored by this body. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Massey, Senator Santos, any other member? I being the, uh, and I, and again, if there's no objection from the members, I would like to, uh, sponsor this in the committee of the whole.
No objection.
So, um, the origin of this, uh, this effort to, uh, recognize Mr. Marchiano stands from, not only from, uh, the acquaintances and the friendship that we have over the years, but also for his invaluable, uh, contribution, no? Uh, everybody knows from Mr. Gordon Marchiano, from emceeing events to, uh, leading, uh, invitation for the, the Japanese, uh, programs, the Japanese council, and the, the advocacy for protection of our indigenous culture and, and to name a few. And not only here on Saipan, but all over, uh, the Northern Maranas. And I'm sure, based on his, uh, uh, experiences, he, his, his passion is always to, to, uh, outside the CNMI, uh, to even him being recognized, uh, by the nation of Japan for his, uh, for his contribution, uh, over the years. So, uh, I, I thought that it's important that we, and I'm sure that some of you guys listen to his, uh, radio, um, talk show during mornings with KKNP. But aside and separate of that, I, I, I certainly, uh, mm, all of, all of the CNMI agrees that this gentleman deserved to be, to, to be recognized in this regard and, uh, I had, I had, I've been convincing him that, you know, this is something that, that needs to be put forth and I'd be more than happy to sponsor it. So finally, he agreed. So I started working in my office and with the help of the OBE and staff, we were able to come up with this product. So, uh, I'm not certain if, I'm not sure if he's listening, but, uh, Gordon, if you are listening, we're adopting this, this resolution today. So I want to thank you for all the stuff that you've been doing now over the years. Ready? All those in favor of the adops, to adopt Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-three, hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next item is Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-four, a Senate Joint Resolution expressing support to implement the participation of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marana Islands in the small community air service programs offered by the United States Department of Transportation. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Motion for to adopt Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-four, in seconded, discussion? Ready?
Uh, Mr. President, if I may.
Senator Santos, recognize.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we cannot overemphasize the importance to join CPA in its pursuit to avail of the small community air service program for a sense of air transportation service for inter-island. We cannot also be complacent in this regard when our citizens, patients, and traffic public are subjected to endure an unpleasant experience whenever it's so perilous despite if, when, and how to provide inter-island air transportation service. And for this reason, we must take a proactive approach and support CPA's letter to the Secretary of the Department of Transportation for air service eligibility proposal through this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Massey, Senator Santos, any other member like to comment? Ready? And if there's no objection from the members, uh, please, you're welcome to to co-sponsor this, uh, joint resolution as this affects every single one of us in the CNMI. And I also would like to commend the, uh, the, uh, chair and the, uh, members of the CPA for, um, for, um, initiating these communications to Department of Transportation and that we can have some, uh, comfort, the comfort that we are heading into the right, right direction so not to have, uh, similar instances as to what transpired over the last, uh, couple of weeks. Um, we are indeed in a very, um, um, critical, uh, period in our time where we're up against so many, uh, obstacles, uh, most recently the, the pandemic. So as we navigate through in our community, uh, this is one less, uh, uh, issue that we need to deal with. And I'm glad that the court store is taking the lead in terms of how to, to, uh, navigate forth, uh, to, to, um, to be qualified for this particular program by, uh, the federal government. So with that, I would like to call for a motion of Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-four. All those in favor to adopt Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-four hereby adopted. Next item is, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm noticing the most recent placement of Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-five. And at this time, I recognize, uh, floor leader for the appropriate motion for the adoption.
Mr. President, before that, did we, um, agree to place House Joint Resolution Twenty-two dash eleven, HS One, on calendar?
May I request for a resolution now? Okay, we're back in session. And at this time, I recognize the floor leader for the appropriate motion for the adoption of House Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash eleven.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our next item is House Joint Resolution Twenty-two dash eleven, HS One, a House Joint Resolution to oppose any government's actions related to nuclear testing, storage, and waste disposal in the Pacific and reaffirm everyone's fundamental right to a safe and healthy living environment. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Motion, there's a motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of House Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash eleven, seconded, discussion? Ready? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the House Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. House Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two eleven, hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our last item under, on our resolution calendar is Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-five, a Senate Joint Resolution approving the governor's request to create a new program and business unit for the retiree bonuses and to reprogram one point three million dollars from the general for the payment of the retirees' five hundred dollar bonus. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero-five, and it's been seconded under discussion. I recognize Senator Edith Edilion Earl.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's always nice to, um, address issues that concerns retirees. I know that they have served, um, their time in the workforce. And obviously, um, everybody wants to see that time in their life where they would generate a certain type of income, an annuity that will sustain themselves, um, throughout their remaining lifetime. I do understand that retirees have received in prior years, um, bonuses. But at the same time too, considering that the, um, this Senate Ju, uh, Joint Resolution reads, um, to reprogram one point three million dollars from the general, I would think it's that general fund account for the payment of the retirees' five hundred dollars bonus, um. When, when we look at the sector of employment and those that are also outside of employment, which is the retirees that we are addressing today, I do want to bring to the attention of this body that I believe that also the other sector of the population is just as deserving of a bonus if we are to reprogram funds from the general fund to pay out a bonus, meaning the existing government employees. I believe personally that they also deserve to be given a bonus because they're also working within the public sector. And similarly, the retirees served their time in the public sector and now living out their time as retirees, earning their annuities from their pension program. Um, also to include income from Social Security, whether supplemental security or their, um, normal annuity from Social Security by giving in ten years or forty quarters of their contribution into private sector employment. I do understand that I also introduced a COLA for the retirees back in June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one. As we speak today, we know that the Social Security Administration have increased the COLA rate for the retired, for those that are receiving Social Security pension. When we look at ARPA, it also talks about premium pay of thirteen dollars for government employees. Premium pay, ordinary pay is different from a bonus. Normally, in the private sector industry, when a company makes money, meaning profitable, they pass off the profits in the form of bonus to their employees. The fact of the matter is that the public sector is not that the public sector is not a private corporate entity. And the funds that are being used to pay out bonuses are public funds. And that's the reason why I want to go on record that similarly, government employees existing today deserve also to be given a bonus because they are serving the community, they are working their time up, perhaps even putting in whatever is lacking of their contribution in Social Security because of the collapse of the former retirement fund program. And I'm hopeful that as we move forward in terms of talking about bonuses, that we do not disregard the other working population within the workforce because I truly feel that they are also well deserving of any type of bonus so that they could better their lives and help their families. We understand it's hard times. We are not generating our own revenues within the Commonwealth. We are living off of federal dollars, the American taxpayers' minds. And if we are to use local funds, in accounting, when you, when we look at the ARPA money, it talks about replenishment of local revenues that were lost as a result of the pandemic. So with respect to financial discussions, the characterization of revenue is eventually going to be labeled as a local revenue because it's a replacement of whatever is lost. And that's the reason why I want to argue the issue about ensuring that also the other working population within the government sector are also given a bonus. And I understand that in the prior years of bonuses for retirees, this is a taxable income. I would think that some sort of tax revenue would be generated also as a result of paying out the bonuses. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Delonge.
Mr. President, if I may.
Recognize Senator Santos.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so after our adoption of this Senate Joint Resolution, I'd like to ask that our House counterpart expeditiously adopts the same so our retirees can avail of these bonuses in time for the holidays. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Santos. I recognize the floor leader Sablon.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Senator Sablon, for pointing out the error in the title. And if there's no objection, I'd like that that be treated as a technical. And if there's no other comments, I'd like to restate the motion so that we can include the correct title.
Recognize.
Just a confirmation. Page two, there's also a typo on line 18. So that should be will, not be in there instead of feel, not. Just so we can include that as a typo.
Will. Clerk, please ignore those two. Correction, I missed the meaning. So that, floor leader, we're done.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to restate the motion with the corrections, and that is to include the word fun after general in the title and also to treat as a technical, page two, line 18. As pointed out by Senator Malonia, that feel will be replaced with will. So at this moment, at this time, again, I'd like to restate the motion to adopt Senate Joint Resolution 22-05, approving the governor's request to create a new program and business unit for retiree bonuses and to reprogram $1.3 million from the general fund for the payment of the retirees' $500 bonuses. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Yeah, as restated by the floor leader on the title and the clarification, it's being seconded. No further discussion. At this time, clerk, please call the roll for the approval of Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-05.
Senator Cruz.
Yes.
Senator Delonge.
Yes.
Senator Hokel.
Yes.
Senator King Nevers.
Yes.
Senator Malonia.
Yes.
Senator Pirova.
Yes.
Senator Sablon.
Okay.
Senator Santos.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. President, all nine members voted yes.
With nine members voting in the affirmative, House, I mean Senate Joint Resolution Number 22-05, entitled "Approving the Governor's Request to Create a New Program and Business Unit for Retiree Bonuses and to Reprogram $1.3 Million from the General Fund for the Payment of the Retirees' $500 Bonuses", is hereby adopted in the Senate. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to call for a short recess. With nine members voting yes, House Bill 22-53 HS1 hereby passes the Senate. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last bill on today's bill calendar is House Bill 22-55, a bill for an act to establish a separate license for online sales of alcoholic beverages. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage in the form of HS1. Where's the final?
Again, a motion offered for the passage, by the floor leader, offered for the passage of House Bill 22-55 HS1. It's being seconded. Discussion? Ready? Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Cruz. Senator Delonge.
Yes.
Senator Hokel.
Yes.
Senator King Nevers.
Yes.
Senator Malonia.
Yes.
Senator Pirova.
Yes.
Senator Sablon.
Okay.
Senator Santos.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. President, all nine members voted yes.
With nine members voting yes, House Bill 22-55 HS1 hereby passes the Senate. Floor leader for the last action on the final reading.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members, you do see two legislations that are left on your calendar. And that's the Senate Bill Number 22-62. And for the request of the author, our Senate President, Senator J. Pop Schneider, has requested that the legislation be referred back to the committee on PTC. So at this time, I'd like to ask, or I'd like to state to the record that Senate Bill Number 22-62 is now referred back to the committee on PTC.
Do you want to thank you, floor leader, for that notification? You have, continuing on, item Q, petitions, memorials, miscellaneous communications.
Mr. President, we have six miscellaneous communication numbers, 22-64 to 22-69.
Any comments from the members? None. Announcements? None. And before I go further, I mean, I am not certain if this will be the last session for this year. But if it is, I would like to wish all of you and your families, and of course, the people of the CNMI, enjoy this Christmas. And hopefully, a more or less chaotic 2022, given the circumstances that we are. No matter what, how much, how we differ on issues before us on a daily basis, whether out there in the community or in this chamber, it's always the level of respect that we have first and foremost. So sometimes, we may seem to show otherwise, but deep down inside, I don't know that each one of us have that in us. So whatever happens, I guess, I ask that whatever happens in here, just leave it in the arena and we can go on our separate ways. And we take care of our day-to-day stuff with our families and friends. So ni wawo, zani sugawo, zani familiya mami. Setindi, please pause, zani nipo paranzo, kanaun, zani members. Thank you. Ni todui, zini shuni zono, ni estimawa, ni markusera mes. Keri mos, tana safu, mona karata, nata, nata konsi, mona nu, tumogi, tso, tso, fara, benefit, ni taza mas, kumi, publico, di tera, kasi. Thank you. So with that, floor leader, I would recognize you. Approving motion for adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. President. And at this moment, an approving motion for adjournment. Today's proceedings subject to the call of the president.
Again, motion offered for adjournment by the floor leader. It's being seconded. I guess under discussion, there's none, right? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn this Senate session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This Senate stands adjourned. Senate session stands adjourned. Thank you very much.